I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I get approval of the minutes.
How many can motion to approve the minutes?
One second. Called a favor. Aye. Opposed. Approve of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Called a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Student presentations, Gilbert Elementary School, student of the month.
All right, Gilbert Elementary, October, students of the month in kindergarten was Hannah Eamon and Edith Kaisler. In first grade Calder Farnsworth and Aubrey Ellaby. In second grade was Delilah Williams and Gage Hatimer. Third grade Rayleigh Weeby and Brently Beckman. Fourth grade Hadley Wilcox and Hatcher Fleming. Fifth grade Xavier Goodman and Madeline Hoy. Congratulations to our students of the month, keep up the good work.
Hi, the October students of the month at KI Sawyer. In DK Evelyn Roberts. Kindergarten Rosalyn Oswald and Donald Stover the fourth. First grade Corey Racine and Kevin Benel. Second grade Isla Campbell and Ava Jones. Third grade Zoe No and Autumn Lakinen. Fourth grade Hayes Whittler and Monroe Whittler. Fifth grade Cadence Bigger and Bella Taylor. And our special student of the month Georgiana Van Denter. Congratulations.
Okay, my apologies, I'm a hair disorganized with my students of the month, but I want to muscle through it, so please bear with me. Just a quick announcement, as I shared last month, we are celebrating our middle school students of the month at the assembly on Wednesday, but we are still announcing them to the board, so you guys get to hear their happy names. Sixth grade student of the month is Mr. Mason Upson. Let's see, seventh grade students of the month Chloe Wilcox and John Green. Eighth grade students of the month, Lex Taderson and Joseph Claremont. All five of those students are doing amazing things, they'll be celebrated in front of their peers on Wednesday during our positive behavior assembly hosted by our middle school teachers, so congratulations to those students. High school students, I did see Ms. Eagle, so please come on down, I saw Mr. Lemay, I saw Mr. Hill, I saw Ms. Plaster, and my senior Ms. Nix I did not see. Go on up to the front guys, I want to stand by the mic, so the people that are joining us from afar can hear, if you guys just kind of stand over on the side, I'll announce you. Ms. Eagle, raise your hand, ninth grade student of the month. Student, uh, let's see, Lila is the daughter of John and Daniella Eagle. She has two sisters Hannah and Carolyn. She plays lots of sports, keeps herself really, really busy, she just got done wrapping up volleyball, she's looking forward to cheer. Her favorite subject in school is geometry and construction, she likes building things, and she also likes the math. This summer she loves running on the four wheelers. Teacher shared that Lila is continuously bringing a good attitude, helpful with all ideas, and her ability to work with others in a constructive manner, so congratulations to Ms. Lila Eagle. Tenth grade student of the month, Mr. Lemay. I told you I was going to pick on you, but I want to be all seriousness, this is what student of the month is meant for. Love the boy to death, once or twice he's been a pain in our backside, but mom and dad and I have worked together super hard, and he, and this is important part, he is making the choices to be an outstanding student. He came up to me about a month ago and was bragging about his grades. I double-checked his grades, just as I promised him I would, I chased him down a couple days later and congratulated him, he was a man of his word. He figured it out, I think, and I hope you stayed there, right bud? Tough love, he's a very honest kid with me, even in our most challenging times. From teachers, his work ethic really took off this year. He participates in generating ideas, asks questions when needed, he's had good attendance, and here's what mom's getting proud of, you're always polite and respectful. This of family members, that was quite a long list you shared with me today. Let's see, parents, Robert Nicole Lemay. Sister Starr, brother Gage, Ryan, Aubrey's another sister, so you got a busy household there. He enjoys going outside, riding his bike, skateboarding, playing football. His favorite class is industrial tech, because he gets, because I get to put the stuff I learned in seventh grade, I like school to an extent. It's a purpose, right? Means to an end was a rare phrase we've used before behind my office doors. Means to an end, get where you want to be. If you want to enjoy all those fun things as an adult, you got to get a good job. Student of the month for 11th grade, I have two of them this month. To the far left, I have Ms. Savannah Glacer, she likes to go sometimes by her nickname Sam, she changes that sometimes. Let's see, Sam, what would I tell the world about you? Parents, Crystal and Jeff Johnson. Sister Madeline and brother Scott, she enjoys drawing, painting, listening to music. She is the captain of our cheerleading squad, she's also assistant coach for the middle school squad. Favorite subject is algebra two, so she's kind of weird like me, loves math, loves Mrs. Heinzel. She's tough, but tough love is a great thing. She's doing Bay class, what Bay classes are you in right now?
I'm in Intro to Psychology.
Intro to psychology, so one of our, some opportunities for juniors and seniors, some of our classes through Bay, that's for college credit. She's going to finish this year as a junior with college credit, and hopefully take more next year, that's her plan. Teachers report that Sam is an amazing student, super helpful with National Honor, or no, you have the opportunity to apply for National Honor Society, I recommend that. She always puts forth 100% effort, whether it's writing essay or creating artwork, so congratulations to Sam. Also, 11th grade junior class, I have Mr. Andrew Hill to the far right, he's the guy who I have to look up to now. Man, you keep growing dude, I'm excited to watch you play basketball, football was a, was a great opportunity. Parents are in the room, I saw Danielle come walking in, I've known Z for a long time. Grandma's here filming, of course, thank you guys for doing that. Teachers and coaches report that Andrew's work ethic is, is, is to be complimented, shows up every day for practice, every day for class, brings his best energy with him at all times. Keep up the hard work, man, I don't, I didn't get an update for Mr. Kipplin to see whether you're National Honor side, but I bet you probably, you probably are, aren't you? I kind of guess so. He's one of the guys, if you hadn't known, he'd never be in my office for any reason, never in trouble, he's a spot-on student. Outside, I know you play sports all the time, you were at Anytime Fitness, or not Anytime, you were with the Advantage Crew just about every day. I know recently you traveled to watch your sister play ball, did you not? I saw mom and a bunch of the family there, you got to go and watch her play. They won too, didn't they? Thought so, so I keep up on you guys. What else for everybody else to share, what's, what else do you do to keep you busy, hunting season?
Yeah, I hunt, I, I spray this in the summer.
That's about it, there's not much time for anything else, is there? So, congratulations to our students of the month, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. I'll have a goodie package for you guys probably tomorrow, early afternoon, if my day goes smooth. Otherwise, I will get in your hands before we leave for Wednesday, okay? Thank you guys. You guys will be able to see. The senior of the month, Ms. Justice Nix is not with us this evening. She is a member of our National Honor Society, she is a member of our volleyball team, she's a member of our basketball team, in fact, they may even be at practice right now. Justice, to put it simple, is 17 going on 20. She's ultra mature, mature young lady, she's making lots of great decisions, she's destined for greatness. The distance she has come since going here in sixth and seventh grade to where she is now is amazing, and all the kudos go to her, so. Congratulations to her and her family, and thank you very much for your time, guys.
So it's the portion of public comment design. All right, this is the portion of meeting, public comment for things that are on the agenda, action items, I don't see any public comment slip, so we'll move on to financial report.
Okay, we have the, the first thing for you all to do is the presentation of claims. Maybe the monthly check register. For the month of October, it begins on page 11 and wraps up on page 21. So I ask the board to approve the total checks and the amount of $878,936.53.
Make a motion to accept.
One second.
Called a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Financial report.
I don't have anything specific, it's interspersed throughout other items tonight, so.
Okay. So, strategic plan update.
Absolutely, because we could look at the golden rod sheet for board goals. Now you'll have a report tonight, you'll have a report in February, and you'll have a report in May. The strategic plan included six board goals. Update on K-12 curriculum for all areas, top priority is locating three 6 through 12 ELA curriculum selections, and I'd like to have that purchased by February, so the implementation would be fall of 2024. However, any staff development, any opportunities that teachers would have with the curriculum materials can happen prior to next fall, well prior to. First year implementation of big ideas is certainly going well. January 19th, that's when the full K through 5, but I'm going to add grade 6 here as well, with benchmark advance, that will be all staff K through 6. Will have a chance to be with the sales rep, she's driving up from Lower Michigan to spend time with us going through the materials. We're looking at a 1 o'clock till 2:30 time slot, and then we need to look at two more ELA curriculums that again score highly on end reports, won't even look or take any time on anything that doesn't. And then after all three are having a chance to assess those, purchase would be made February of 2025, implementation 25, 26. Teachers were feeling that I was moving too fast, I've been accused of that before. So, I'm listening to them and making sure that whichever curriculum we purchase, they've had vested interest in it. Big ideas is big this year as the first year of implementation, needing to make sure that they're feeling comfortable with that. Doesn't mean that if teachers are comfortable with that, that we won't select that, but we do want to give a true honest picture of two more that are scoring highly on that. October 16th of 2023, all teaching staff went to NMU, and they started the ELA process of K through 5, of looking at the standards, determining what's a priority standard, what's a secondary standard. And Marissa has the social studies curriculum committee is part of that. They are starting a curriculum committee for ELA, but they're moving too slowly for us to select what they're necessarily going to select. We'll probably need the leaders showing them the different materials for at least three of those prior to them making their decision. Student safety was number two on your list of board goals. The discipline section of the MTSS report is lengthy, and that would be the report right before this. Multi-tiered system of support, the November update, if anyone would like this report, feel free to contact Jane and we'll shoot it to you. In fact, the board goals update, we'll shoot that to you as well, if you're interested in that. Staffing shortages, we are asking to reopen the support staff contract in order to address need for more pay. And we also brought something with me, which is a referral plan. And that is to try to get bus drivers, or we could expand it for any hard-to-find area, but this would be clearly something that is needed and a strategy towards one of your goals. TJ, you'll be present with us, and it'll be Amy, and it'll be myself, and of course, we'll bring it back to the full board of what we were able to figure out. Student accountability is your fourth goal, the whole synopsis of the MTSS report is progress for that whole area. And goal five, safety for staff, both physical and emotional. I love the Dr. Adam Sins specifically addressing the emotional, how can we help our staff, all staff, with working through stress? What we do need to figure out is how we can get more time for our staff to get into some of those video modules, the classes as per se. So, we're looking at the January in-service, fortunately, we do have other early release days that we, we're going to need to work to find, okay, how can we get some time for staff to get through that? It, without repercussions, I gave you an example of concerns that are able to come forward, because people are starting to feel quite comfortable. We continue to ask ourselves, how can we support our staff and address concerns properly? I told you when I was hired, servant leadership is my leadership style. I already felt that the principals already had that servant leadership style, so the melding of that is working quite well. Six, goal six, coordinated and well-thought-out communication, positive promotion. And we hired the social media ed-for-you, the staff spotlights, I've seen two so far, and they do them every, you know, once in a while. The only concern we had was that wanting to make sure that we're having equal amount of posts from KI as we are from elementary, we figured that one out, because now we tell Tori Sands, who's our, our social media person, we let her know who, this is coming from KI, or this was coming from Gilbert Elementary, so. And I've seen the middle school, high school step it up a notch, they have to, because they've got two other schools, and they're only, you know, well, it's middle school, high school, but they, they have half the kids, so we need pictures coming. I hope you're happy with that positive promotion. Again, the vision is make the positive so loud that the negative can't be heard. All right, that's it on your goals, and you do have the full typeout of all of the things that came forward from the staff, and what came forward from you that weren't as high a vote getter, but they're still on that list, so as time allows, we'll get to some of those tasks that you've given us. MTSS, is that, it's all part of this, but do we have a separate line for MTSS? We do, okay, I'll be quiet.
This is the sinking fund update, is that PJ?
Yep. We, it's going to be on page 25, although there's not a whole lot in there PJ, hasn't changed.
I wasn't volunteering, I was just asking if you were doing that.
In the way of sinking fund right now, I'm in between projects, the HVAC project is finishing up. The punch list is, is active right now, and the contractor's working on finishing it out. In the way of new projects, I'm looking at changing out some more drinking fountains here at the high school, middle school. And the server room air conditioner was successfully installed and is running. That's, that's that, until I get the final votes from OHM as to how much the drinking fountains are going to be, that's where I'm at. When the engineer drives.
So, the sinking fund, that, the topic has come up, you know, in the community, what have we done with our sinking fund money thus far? We've had this as, as far as I can remember, this has always been an item in every one of our board meetings, is an update on the sinking fund, even though it's redundant, because these are like the year's projects that we talk about every single month, so. I just wanted to make it clear to anybody listening that's not here, that's here today or is not here today but watching this later, that has asked the question, what have we done with the sinking fund money? Well, we've talked about it at every single board meeting, and we can go back to every one of them and bring this up and show the list of what we've done with all that money.
That is correct.
But again, they can ask Jane, and we'll send it to them.
That was a more appropriate spot to add that than at board comments, because by then people quit listening to us.
That's true. MTSS update.
Hi, in your board packet is the Lacy report for you for this November board meeting, and all of the administrators are here to present for you, we've divided all of the report into each focus area, so I'll be starting today talking about attendance. So, as you know, or as we've talked about, attendance has been somewhat of an issue for Gwynn. Last year when we had our MTSS review, 46% of Gwynn students were identified as chronically absent, which means that they have missed more than 10% of the school year, more than 18 days, which is what the threshold is for the state of Michigan. So, almost half of our kids were over that, scary numbers, definitely something that we want to make a priority. Clearly, being in school is going to have an impact on student learning, it's going to have an impact on student proficiency, it's going to have an impact on behavior, it's going to have an impact on everything. And so, we really have tried to make that a focus, working with families and parents on why that is important. So, what this baseline data is showing you is initially, the first chart there. So, we had count day recently, and numerous reports are created, thanks to Jane, regarding anything and everything in our school. So, this report is based on attendance from this year, the first day of school, September 5th until November 3rd. So as of that, those 43 days of school, the bar graph then shows you the average percentage of student attendance in comparison to where they were last year. So, last year, we had a lot of the same protocols in place regarding notifying families and parents, but this year we've put into place a lot of promoting you to be here, and I'll get to that shortly. So, at the middle school, high school, 92% of our students have been in attendance. At Gilbert, 96%, and at KI Sawyer, 93%. All buildings have been, have seen an increase of 2%. So we pulled that same report from last year, ran the numbers, and what was our average attendance for that same report last year? So we're up 2%, for us, we feel like that's a win, just because, you know, we've just started all of our initiatives, and yay, we, we do see some improvement.
It's 20 more students.
Yep.
For the district, 20 more students, district line on a daily basis.
Right.
It adds up over the course of a year.
So on page two then, this top graph was one given to us by the MTSS review. So that was showing our chronically absent rate over years' time. And as you can see, we did grow quite a bit there, and we were all growing basically at the same rate. What I do want to point out is that in 2022, so just coming back there from that, you know, the pandemic, the Michigan average was 38.5% chronically absent. We were still sitting about 48, so we were still 10% higher than the state average. So again, just proving, we need our kids here in school. We know all the other things that are being affected, we know all the things that we keep hearing about Gwynn schools, but we're showing you, but your kids aren't coming, so we need your kids here. So, taking that idea of chronically absent and really looking at those students, because they're the ones we need to grab a hold of, they're the ones we need to convince their parents, we need your students here. The chart at the bottom is a percentage of where our students are now after 43 days. So the difference in the colors there, so I'll just take Marquette, or excuse me, the middle school, high school, I have other data over here with Marquette, I'm sorry. If I look at 10% for the school year, so a student would have to miss eight, more than 18 days. Already at the high school, there is 1.4% of students who've already done that, and we've only been in school for 43 days. So sadly, we can't fix that one. Like, we want it to be better, but they're already going to be earmarked chronically absent, even if they attend for the rest of the year. At Sawyer, .0004%, it's one student. It is what it is, there are reasons sometimes that kids are absent, and we do understand that. The blue number there is showing, okay, so if we're looking at that 10% that students can miss, 10% of the school year, already at the middle, high school, there are 19% of students who are, who have missed, well, we're going to say five or more days, because we've been in school 43 days as of when this graph was made, they've missed five or more. So they're already, should they continue this pattern, by the end, we're going to have that percentage again. So right now, our focus is, okay, let's grab that 19% at the middle, high school, let's grab that 11% at Gilbert, let's grab the 17% at my school, and figure out how to get these kids to school, because right now, they're, they're showing the pattern that this could continue. Okay, so that's why we're looking at this data, you know, graphs are pretty, but what are we going to do with it later? We want those opportunities now, we know who those kids are, okay, how are we going to get them there? Okay, next page, so things that we're doing. Again, the initial strategies that are in place have, have, were done last year, but we're all going to admit to you that the fidelity of the implementation is spot-on this year, and we have folders in place and a true system happening. Teachers at the beginning of the year were asked to contact students who were chronically absent last year, their families, and say, hey, how can we help you get to school this year, this is really important. That was contact one, school just started. When students hit the 5% absences, our school counselors are reaching out. Again, it's, it's not the heavy of the principal calling, but it's the, hey, what do you need, what's wrong, how can we get you there? And then, again, letters are sent home, more reminders, makes it very official. And then again, once 10% is hit, that's when the principals do get involved and try to help these families get to school. One thing that has been difficult is that an absence is an absence. So, I know you're calling in, thank you, thank you for excusing your child. I still need them here to learn. So I know when Johnny's had the flu for two weeks, like, you know, just an example, they're still going to get a letter. But I know myself, I'll say, I'm really glad he's feeling better and he's back in school. The ones we're not sure of are where it kind of gets really sticky, you know, and we might start saying, it's very important for your kindergartner not to miss these foundational skills. So, it's hit or miss what we get back, but again, excuse is fine, and yes, we need to know that you know your child's not in school, but not in school isn't going to work for learning, especially if, if there isn't a true valid reason. Finally, just some positive initiatives that we're doing, that I know at the elementary level, I can speak to the most, and Brad piped in, you know, kids are really engaged, both elementaries have target boards where we're averaging weekly attendance and putting their names up on the target board, getting as close as you can to 100. So they, they come in and see where their names are. They get a ticket every day for coming to school, those tickets are put into a monthly drawing, then a name is picked, K2 and 35, and then they get some sort of choice board of a prize they want, just anything to promote being there. And they're excited, and it's not, you weren't here too bad, no, every day you're there, you get a chance. So, they've been really excited about that, perfect attendance is always awarded at the end of the month. And then we've, we have extended this now to the staff, because, hey, staff come every day too, and they deserve to be in a drawing, and, and get a gift card of some sort. So Brad, I know at the middle school, high school, you also do perfect attendance drawings and special assemblies.
Yeah, our, our perfect attendance drawing is a little different with the seven-period day, a lot more moving parts. So every Friday, we draw one middle school student and one high school student who have had perfect attendance for that five-day week, and they get a gift card. As opposed to doing the ticket drawing, we'd be a big mess with seven periods, so that's one thing we've altered, and we're also doing boards, we have a bullseye coming up to kind of match what they have, and instead of doing it by teacher... And instead of doing it by teacher, we're going to do it by grade level. So we have a sixth grade mark and a seventh grade mark all the way through.
So that sums it up for attendance. Any questions or suggestions or feedback?
This is beautiful. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Brad.
Awesome, right, I like the presentation, I'm a numbers geek. So we shared the information. In long story short, this is baseline data. This is what we're going to start comparing ourselves to. This is from the spring of last year. And our goal is throughout the course of this year, to find places for gains. One of the words we are using kind of in behind closed doors is the bubble kids, the kids who are right near proficiency that might not be getting noticed. We spot the highest kids, we compliment them all the time. We find the lowest kids, because they're the ones that are clearly struggling because they're failing everything. They're the ones that are on the attendance list. Those are the kids we're working hardest on all the time. But for us to show test scores that are more positive, especially when it comes to all our grading systems and what's known publicly, we want to focus on those middle kids. And I know our title teachers down at the elementary schools have really, really worked hard to identify those. Mrs. Vidal here at the high school has already started processing, comparing some failing grades with the attendances, our attendance, and we're also be adding the middle and high school testing data along with that. So as you see, these lovely bar graphs are nice and colorful. There's three kind of going on in each graph. ELA across grades, as you look at the top, these are from two thousand and twenty-two. And they compare Gwynn to the state average, to the Marissa average. And as we take a look at those, you have grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. There is a difference there. M-Step for grades three through seven, eighth grade is based off the PSAT. And you can see where that data falls on those tests for both two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three for ELA. You see a few places where we rank very close to our peers, very close to state averages, and other grade levels where we're not doing so well. And I think that's, go ahead, Marcy.
If you want to compare two from kind of grade level to grade level, if you look at grade three for two thousand and twenty-two, and then that would be the fourth grade for two thousand and twenty-three, because they're upper grades. So you can see from grade three to grade four, we went up two and a half percent with our students. So you can kind of do a little bit of, you know, just looking at more apples to apples.
Is this for all third, fourth, or third grade or whatever?
This is for, this is for the district, yes. So it would be Sawyer and Gilbert data combined with the third, fourth, fifth grade, and then, of course, sixth grade altogether and so forth.
Do you have that separated by chance?
Don't for this report, but we talked about that, Marcy and I, because we did separate it like on attendance.
Yeah, our title teachers did do, it's not nice like this in a graph, but they did take the data from each building and they have it like where the bubble kids are, and it is separated.
We could put it in definitely, maybe for everyone.
Right, because then you'd be able to see specifically for the growth.
Right, well, I think you can get a lot of the information out of that as well, you know.
Our title team does have that data that they're using at each building. But yes, when we were comparing it to the Marissa and state, it was lumped together.
I do have, I don't know, Dr. Cronin, I do have paperwork from the MTSS meeting. I have copies in my folder, actually. So I don't know if the board wants that, I can give it.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't mind seeing it. No, thank you for the diagonal comparison. It's really important when you realize that for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, that there's a grade level change. There's also some testing style changes. And you'll see that those percentages in certain places take a big jump. For example, fifth grade and sixth grade, it's a different test to take for ELA. So across the state, there's a big drop in proficiency. And one big misconception that we talked about in our MTSS meeting on this last week was, when you see proficiency, a lot of us go to our high school, middle school grading scale, where a hundred percent to ninety is an A, and eighty is a B, and seventy is a C. That's not how proficiency works. If you see at the state level, and we'll go to the very, very first one for two thousand and twenty-three for ELA, the state average is approximately forty percent proficient. So our mindset, that it takes sixty percent to pass, or eighty percent to get a B, the state proficiency level is forty percent. So when we are at thirty-five percent, yes, we're below the state average. But we're not thirty-five percent on the hundred percent scale in our head as far as, well, that's like way below a D. That's like a bad, bad F. We're five percent below the average because the way the test is built, the state average is only at forty percent, if that makes sense. Don't think of it as an A, B, C scale. Like, a lot of times we go to when we think proficiency, and we always go back to our teacher's rubric. And the teacher, you know, they gave us that grading scale rubric on the first day of the semester. It's an absolute different scale. On the next page, you see the exact same comparison for the math M-steps. Again, make that diagonal comparison. Again, the test from fifth grade to sixth grade does change again. They take a different version, as well as going from seventh grade to eighth grade. Some definite areas of positive growth in there. Definitely hard work being done. On the next page, we have the high school scores for ninth, tenth, and actually eleventh grade. I only had ninth and tenth when I originally started making the table. I added a column for the eleventh grade. Some positives. Current eleventh grade students. We scored better than two local schools, missing a nice on both, on the ELA test. Tenth grade, we're above the state average by three percent. And our ninth grade, we have some work to do. So those are last year's test scores. That's currently our seniors, juniors, and sophomores from the spring. Similarly, in math, we beat a few of the local schools. You know, a lot of times we compare ourselves to the Marissa average. And remember, half the students in Marissa attend Marquette Senior High School for these test scores. And that's almost half the students. They're outperforming us right now, but we have our targets set high. We're going to keep chasing after them. Tenth grade test, we're ten percent, or six percent above the state average for the tenth graders in math. I will say this, our tenth graders are one of our strongest classes we've had in a while on this test. So I'm really excited to see where their test scores go. Current eleventh graders, yes. The tenth graders that took the PSAT ten in the spring are current juniors, are very academically strong as a whole. They work hard. You'll see following along, we have NWEA baseline data. Again, baseline data. That's what we are going to compare to in February, and again, in May, when we show the growth that our students are making throughout the course of the year. It's broken down by Gilbert and Sawyer, math ELA, middle school, reading math as well. We do not take the NWEA in the high school. We're looking at possible different ways to collect some different baseline data, besides just using PSAT, which is only an annual test, so. But you see where our rankings are, and obviously, our goal is to change the color coding from less red to more blue, more green. That's our goal. And hopefully, our growth shows that when we come back together in February. Any of the graphs that I may have gone too fast on or unclear? I think the plan behind the scenes is to work, as I mentioned before, identifying those bubble kids, the kids in the middle. A big mission I have with Mrs. Vidal is we want to identify especially those current tenth graders that as a group scored really low in the ninth grade. We need to break the perception that PSAT stands for practice, it doesn't matter. Because I guarantee you, of the seventy or so kids that took that test last year, I have several students who made a contest how fast they could take it. So teaching them the importance of taking it for the right reasons, not only to prepare themselves for the future, but to get a good measuring stick on where you are, so you set goals for yourself. So you work harder and you score better for yourself. And then our test scores, you know, obviously, reflect that. So that's a big motive we have for our current tenth graders, as well as students at younger ages. So anything else I can share at this time?
Can I just get some clarification? So when we're, so on page four?
Okay.
So take the ELA M-Step.
Yep.
Two thousand and twenty-two. So the fourth grade?
Yep.
Ours is twenty. And then if I go down to the next, the M-Step two thousand and twenty-three?
It's the fifth grade.
I'd be looking at the fifth grade.
That'd be the same group of students.
That's a thirteen point three percent.
Correct.
Improvement on proficiency. And if you notice, the state average didn't change.
Right.
And the Marissa average changed minimally. So we made good ground up on the state that year.
It's great. I mean, there's a lot, and I see the dip because of different testing. And there's a dip across the state and Marissa as well. Can you kind of, can you kind of kind of figure out what, why that jump took place between?
What caused the growth, per se?
Yeah, the growth percent.
Absolutely, that our title teachers are breaking down the data. And I'm sure you can identify as teachers and students that mesh well, group of students that probably have better than average group of attendance, I'm sure. As we continue to dig, because we're learning this process of really diving into data more than we ever have, and then figuring out exactly how we can use that data to our advantage, to identify weaknesses.
If you look at this one, it kind of helps break that down a little bit, this other one that I gave you. It separates the buildings, but it shows you those bubble kids we're talking about. It gives you like the specifics of had like this many students moved in this year, and you'll see where our scores dipped. We had, you know, ten new students in one grade level. And when that happens, you know, you don't even have the opportunity to teach those kids. They're coming in, they're taking the test, and we're getting scored for that. So our title teachers went through and really looked at, you know, reasons why this is happening. And so now we're really honing in on, okay, if this is what is happening, what are we going to do to make sure that we're doing something about this? So attendance is one of it, one of them. Chronically absent's been marked in here. We've earmarked kids that were chronically absent, what were their scores, and how are they doing? And where are we going to, you know, how can we improve with them? There's lots of really good information on this. It also shows, you know, how many kids were in that per se bubble, which was like five points or less below the threshold. And we've had, there are, in some of these numbers, are very few kids below that threshold, like two to three kids. And if those three kids would have scored three to four, to sometimes maximum five more points, we would have been right in there with the state and the Marissa scores. So hence the reason we're really looking at those bubble kids, because Brad said it perfectly, we're always looking at the high kids, we're always looking at the low kids. But what are we doing with those kids right on the cusp, that are right there? You know, that are always kind of behaving, just doing what we want them to do, but maybe attendance is an issue with them, or, you know, just something they're missing, a little piece of it. So we've been diving super deep into a lot of data lately and figuring out exactly what our kids need and pinpointing. And teachers have been phenomenal about working with small groups, exactly what the kids need, what they want.
That's kind of, are you down? It's kind of interesting, too, to look at the age groups and looking at this and thinking of where those kids were during the major years of COVID, when they were not in person, and how that affected their ELA.
Some of our kids missed an entire year of GYN.
Yeah, so it's kind of interesting to see, since they have that full year back in person, how those numbers jump.
Yeah, it's interesting to look at. There's a lot of things to consider, but I think the goals that we have right now with really looking at attendance as one of them, is one of the other things. It's a good command of all, but.
And only because you brought it up, we had mentioned it previously when I shared NWE results. Remember that the NWE results are still normed based off the two thousand and nineteen fall testing. So they're still normed on pre-COVID data. The state averages are all lower than they would be in comparison. But those new norms will be coming out probably this year. So we'll see where we restack up. But growth is our goal. We know where our kids' scores are today. We want those scores to meet or exceed the expected growth that NWE has. So that's what we're focusing on.
Thanks, Flueger.
Yeah, you mentioned that you've been able to get into this data more and to expand, to figure out where we need to make these fixes. It's kind of a loaded question, you don't have to answer it. You can say, I don't have the information to make an accurate answer. But we always seem to get, we struggle with making, hiring people in counseling positions and filling some of these other positions to give this admin team the ability to take time and do this. Have some of those investments helped in the long run to give you, just to give you the opportunity to sit down and go through this and to help the students too? Is that fair?
I think this statement is priceless. I think it is the only reason, we've been short-staffed at the high school, middle school, as we brought on our new student success coordinator throughout the course of the year. And we still were able to get to more because I have teammates, like Angie Mishaw, who's helping out with the guidance office, we moved her over. And we have the social work, additional help with the new social worker, one at each level, as well as the thirty-one ans support that we're getting from Marissa. The ability to have more team members and dive in. You know, Mrs. Vidal, I shared her already, she's diving into the attendance part, because she's kind of Rob's teammate as we train Luke Garrity, our new student success coordinator, to take over attendance. But Mrs. Vidal has been Rob's assistant when it comes to contacting all those parents or the families when the kids hit five percent. And having those conversations with the students, where if she was trying to tackle both tasks, that wouldn't be feasible, which means it would land on my plate or Mr. Sterling's plate, which would then make us decide, okay, what's more important? That meeting to build a relationship to solve the problem that's really their attendance? Or put out this fire that we have? Or even better yet, diving into data so we can focus on what can improve teaching and learning. So I'm super excited where that goes. You know, we're talking about some additional supports as we continue to go forward. Again, just find the best places to use our resources.
I think it's a marathon, not a sprint, right? But I think that you are outpacing yourselves with getting the data and then being able to implement it into actual change.
Well, if I can speak for my two partners in crime, Mr. Sterling, who's joined our administrative team, we took it very seriously this summer. When we sat down at MTSS up in Marissa, and we had these people from University of Minnesota come in and, man, it smacks you right in the face when you look at data and, okay, we're going to make excuses or we can find solutions. We just wanted to find solutions. Our kids and our families and our community deserve the best. And, you know, we have Dr. Cronin on board helping support all those decisions. And board members, you guys have been supportive of it. And we're just trying to give it all to answer those questions for our kids.
Admin team is now meeting twice a month. First month, we only met once for admin team, but then actually, the group said, we want just the principals only with you. And that's another three-hour meeting. But the guts of what we could talk about during that, we're not wasting anybody else of the department heads' times, and we are able to get at this. I brought the strategy of the bubble kids in and requiring, I want, we need the names of these students so that we can address that. And I commend the principals for that work. I deeply feel we have a right, admin and social workers and counselors in place.
What's that? Marcy has PBIS.
Marcy, before you start, could you please put Avis's name on one of these and Ashley's name on one of these? Because I always want to make sure that if one board member has it, all board members have it. And the data on this, showing how many special ed students showed up, you know, et cetera, that all factors in to the amount of time that any instruction could even be given. Please take your time and read this on your own. This is really cool stuff. Was this the one that Nikki Sheltro did?
Yeah, Nikki and Julie.
And Julie.
Laurie worked on together.
Okay, they all worked on it.
Nikki spearheaded it. So I have to say, you know, as much as you're commending us without our co-leaders by our sides.
You tell them what we need.
It comes to us like that, you know? And Nikki's been doing this for years, and now able to share that with Julie Anderson and Laurie Jancy as well. And they're the ones that sit and disseminate what kid needs what, and then sit with the teachers. And it's amazing what they do in twenty-five minutes in the morning with each grade level to sit and really talk about kids and what our kids need to be successful. And it's changed the whole vision and purpose of our teaching. So it's pretty awesome what they've done. So I'm doing behavior. I'm going to be pretty quick. I'm just going to say, I have to say, at least at my building, behavior has been incredible so far with just a little bit of guidance. When we sat this summer, like Brad said, we kind of were down, we were down a soup. And we were like, okay, guys, let's do this. And we just sat down together and we started just getting it done. It was quite amazing, and it was some of the best administrative time that I've had in this district. But we sat down and came up, along with our counselors, this student behavior PBIS system that you can see on that front page. So that was given out to all of our teachers. And then a sheet much like that was given out to our new hour supervisors as well that take care. And then a sheet much like that was given out to our new hour supervisors as well that take care of behavior outside. Um, and so it just kind of tells them, when is it a write-up, when is it something you take care of, when is it something that you you send on to the principal? Um, I had some really great comments from teachers that said, thanks for giving me the power back. Thanks for me being able to, you know, do this and make a decision in my classroom and be able to give a consequence if that's what's necessary. And then I come in and I, you know, can support that. But um, you know, it's really the teachers taking charge of of their area and their place and in their classroom. And then we're there to support that, so that's what this really did for them. Um, if you look at the next chart, it says percent of students without an office referral. Which are pretty incredible numbers so far, and we're going to day forty-three, which would have been November third. Um, in the school year, so at the middle school, high school, we had eighty-two percent of the students in this building did not have an office referral. Ninety-five percent of the students at Gilbert did not have an office referral and ninety-two percent at Sawyer did not have an office referral. So it doesn't mean there's not things happening, okay, don't make me paint a bad picture here, however. Things are being taken care of in the classroom quickly, swiftly, and we're moving on with the day. It's not a big interruption to the school day anymore if somebody's, you know, not doing their homework or maybe not doing something. Um, the teachers are taking care of that, so pretty amazing numbers, if you look at that, I'm pretty excited about it. Um, summary, it's that new flow chart, that's number one that we gave out, and then exactly what you were just talking about. Um, John, was that the support that we have right now is exactly the reason this is happening. So we have our thirty-one N support, which is true therapy for students and families in our buildings, that's the support that comes in from Marissa. Um, they provide health therapy, individual, group or family therapy services. And a lot of our families would never get that, I personally have a child that has taken nine months to get into therapy. So it is not a short wait and us having a thirty-one N at our fingertips in each of our buildings is amazing. And it is working. Um, currently, our thirty-one N providers at the middle school, high school are serving forty-three still students, at Gilbert, twenty students, and at Sawyer, thirty-nine students. So um, that's a lot of kids that are getting a lot of mental health that they need that they wouldn't be getting had we not had this. Um, all of our buildings currently have a full-time counselor who, among other things, provide brief counseling, social emotional interventions, individual group. Or they go into the classrooms as well to do some of that. Um, middle school, high school has a full-time social worker in their building. And um, Sawyer and Gilbert share a social worker currently at this time. Social workers, um, they provide I E P required services for students receiving special education. Um, but they are also there for other students that may need some support too, so they're not just for special education, but the majority of their work comes through an I E P. Um, if you flip to ten, number four, we have some more at-risk funding. That's going to be hopefully supporting hiring interventionists at each building to address academics and behavior. So when we talk about the bubble kids, the, this is the reason we want these people in. So the Nickys, the Lories and the Julys of the world will be adding one more team member hopefully to each building. To help disseminate the data, to look even more at behavior kind of things, to even be one more person on the team. To really work individually with students and even with teachers when they're needing that support. So um, this is, this is a person to really address those bubble kids, maybe not the title, which is getting that lower thirty percent. Special education is hitting the ten percent at the bottom. Everyday tier one is hitting those top kids, but who's getting that those middle kids, so this is what we're, we're really hoping that this will do for us. Um, positive initiatives are across the district, um, at both elementary schools, we have dojo at Gilbert, we have brag tags. Sawyer has Roar's cards, um, second step S E L curriculum goes all the way through eighth grade, correct? Eighth grade, yeah, um, we have assemblies every month for behavior and attendance. We have student of the month at all of our buildings and individual behavior cards as lo- as well as check-in and checkout systems. Any questions on behavior?
Thank you.
Good evening, board, um, my name is Janie Pruden, I'm your new special education coordinator, so thank you for having me. And before I talk about special education and special education data, it's just really been an honor to serve Gwen. And be a part of this administrative team. And all of the educators and families and community members and everybody is just so tireless and filled with so much compassion, so. It's just been a really amazing experience, so thank you for having me. Okay, so page eleven, um, looking at special education data, and it's just an overview of special education, Gwen. And it's broken up by the two elementary schools and then the middle and high school. And it's really just big picture special education data by the number of students identified. Um, under I D E A and then their eligibility categories. So um, goes Gilbert has. Out of their two hundred and twenty-two students, nineteen percent of them are identified as having a disability. With K I Sawyer with two, about two hundred, these are approximations, two hundred and thirty-seven students, thirty-three percent of these students have I E Ps. It's also to take into account that K I Sawyer has the high needs classroom as well as the E C S year, the early childhood special education program. And then the middle and high school. With twenty-two percent, the middle school, uh, students with disabilities, and then at the high school, fifteen percent. And like this data could be interpreted in a lot of different ways, or, you know, thinking about how that impacts student achievement. As well as like the needs of the school and the needs of the students, so. Um, any questions about that, specific eligibility data? Um, I'm sorry, I can go over what those um, acronyms mean, so I let's uh, I think. K I Sawyer is a good one because it's got a representation of all the eligibility categories. So S L I is speech and language impairment, S X I, so if I was to go, I guess, counterclockwise. Um, that means like a student with multiple impairments, so they have a couple different things going on, so it could be deaf, blindness. Or um, you know, they could be medically fragile. A I is autism impairment, C I is cognitive impairment. Um, E I is emotional impairment, L D is a learning disability, and O H I stands for other health impairment. So that's oftentimes our kids that have A D H D or let's say oppositional defiant disorder. Um, and so Gwen's got it all and um. And so I just. It's the the numbers of, you know, the special education numbers are a little bit higher than the state average, but, you know, just coming here, I saw the amount of students. That ca- that moved into our school district with I E Ps, so. It was quite a few. Any more questions or about that data? Okay, and then just lastly, just to talk about the L R E or least restrictive environment, and so that's the part of. The federal law, I D E A, that it states that children with disabilities are to be educated with students without disabilities. To the maximum extent appropriate. And that doesn't mean that like kids with I E Ps need to be in the general education one hundred percent of the time. It is to the maximum extent appropriate based off their needs, and Gwen has made this amazing shift. And, you know, implementing inclusion, you know, really beautifully, of course, there are bumps in the road is when you, you know, implement any new. Initiative, but I really just want to applaud the efforts of all these teachers and co-teachers and making it happen. And their inclusion rates and their L R E rates have increased so much from last year. And what that means, you know, in to student achievement is just that it's more students being exposed to grade level standards and. You know, having the opportunity to learn alongside their peers. Anything else?
We already covered the board goals, and so can we go on to the.
Absolutely.
Campus lunch. Um, Mr. Fluger and I spoke about this, this is the direction the board wants to go. Our recommendation would be that there's criteria put in place, that there would be a grade point average. That needs to threshold before they'd be allowed to just go. Uh, we did contact Ray Davis from Truen, our attorney, and um, check on the liability. And the answer is yes, the district would hold the liability if you're going to approve that. You limit the amount of risk if you limit that those students, if they have office referrals. Um, detentions, et cetera, as well as your um, grade point average. That ends up helping it a bit as well, so it becomes a privilege. The only thing that Mr. Fluger and I disagreed on, he felt it should be maybe more like a a three point oh or a three point two five. Me, I'm tougher, I said no, three point five, but it's his building, so I'll yield. Um, but at this point, the concern I've got is tardiness. We're working so hard on attendance, and now we're going to put something in place where students, how can they get off campus? Are we going to allow cars or not, if we don't allow cars, some of our restaurants are out of the mix. Uh, but that's a board decision, if, you know, you're choosing to do any of this. But if you're going to do just walking, you lower your liability. And yet now they've got to be able to go off, eat, uh, walk and eat as they're coming back and not be tardy. And how many times them being tardy and then this privilege is taken away? So those are the things that we chatted through, and now it's up to you.
I'll start it if you want, I was the one that asked to bring this to the uh, to be put on as a discussion, I like the idea of it, um. Personally, you know, there's something else we could add to this is for this positives, positive initiatives on the M T S S, you know. Um, you could add this there as well, you know, by having it on as a. Yeah, as part of a carrot forum, you know, kind of dangle that in there. So I like the idea, um, I don't know if we necessarily, what what, how long is lunch hour for?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty-four from the time of voting to the time of.
I don't think we need to, you know, give them, let them use their cars on break. Um, they're not going to be going up to the up north or anything like that for thirty-four minutes, you know. Um, if they just want to go outside, you know, if they bring their own lunch or get lunch from here, go outside and want to eat it just to get air. There's no reason why they shouldn't be able to, our teachers can go out, get air whenever they want, or not whenever they want, but on their break, whatever, you know. Um, so we should be offering this to s- at least our, the kids that earn it, in my opinion. Um, I personally would like to see ten through twelve, um. But that's my opinion on it, so that's where I'm standing on it, um, I understand that there's going to be a lot of wiggle room, um, for the grades, you know. Um, uh, strict rules as far as tardinesses go, you know. If they have, you know, two, they're done. You know, or whatever, maybe whatever you want to decide, three strikes, three-strike rule, I don't know, um, I'd be open to that.
Any ideas of how we will monitor this?
That's what I was gonna say.
Oh, I've got comments, I'll just wait to the end.
No, but I'm asking the question.
You know, this is helping some of the businesses that help or that donate a lot to us, you know, it's kind of helping them out a little bit by, you know. We maybe we sell, help sell fifteen pizza slices or something or across the street at the gas station, you know. They're they're, they do a lot of stuff for us, so little things that we can give back, um, I think is great. And just getting out, letting them get outside to eat, whether it be for whatever reason. Um, as far as policing, I don't know. I I don't know how that works. You know.
Just a question I'm asking in hopes that you'll do some thinking on it, because we can't do, vote on it tonight, it's just discussion.
It's just discussion.
Not under approval, but it is a question we have.
Yep, but you know, um, as far as on-campus grounds, you know, maybe if we have. A teacher or something that's just walking around and they see somebody vaping out in the corner, you know, they would bust them or whatever, but as as far as off-campus. You know, I think that would be up to our local police departments to kind of take care of, I don't know. What's that? Yeah, but I also see state police and uh, Marquette County Sheriff over here all the time, so. It's my opinion. Go off, John.
So, cause I'm the bad guy.
Yeah, you usually are.
I have a lot of concerns about this, for one, how are we going to monitor, how, who is going to stand at the door and keep track of what kids can go and what kids can't? Um, then you have the kids that can and the kids that can't, creating a divide between them. Now, I understand, get your grades better and follow the rules and maybe you could have that privilege. I understand the concept of helping our local businesses and I'd be open to, if it's, for one, I don't want to say. To me, it's kind of a slap in the face to our food service program that's come a long ways. In the last several, couple of years, it's it's gotten dramatically better. Um, the grass is sometimes greener on the outside and the kids want to go out and get a slice of pizza. Maybe the conversation could be, instead of opening our campus up. What if we allowed a local business to come in on certain days and if they wanted to, then sell slices of pizza? I mean, I don't know what that looks like, I'm not a business person, you know, would they, would they be making a bunch of pizzas and not selling them and losing money? I don't, I don't know how that would look, but from a safety and security standpoint, I think it's a nightmare.
I think part of the, part of the thing would be is uh, the people that are qualified or the students that are qualified to go out, you would have to have. Parent permission to leave for, you know, without a doubt.
I yell because I'm hard of hearing.
No, I'm the same way, I don't, and I want everybody else to hear too, but I'm not yelling.
If I tell my kid, you're not leaving campus during the day, I'm not there to make sure they stay, and I don't think it's a burden that should be put on the rest of the, another burden on the staff. To make sure my kid and to have to go through a list of parental slips to see if my kid was allowed to leave campus, it's just. I don't know how we would manage it with our campus setup now. Um, people coming and going, propping doors open, again, safety and security threats that we're opening ourselves up. It's already a liability that I'm, I don't want to sign off on, and honestly, if it's put up to a vote, I'm already a solid no. Not that that influences your decisions at all, I'm just saying, I'm a solid no.
I'm on the very same, we were, I'm of the era when the campus closed, like I got one year of open campus here. We were so upset when they closed, but looking back now, um, there was car accidents during lunch. Um, there was people drinking during that lunch break, I mean, there was the infamous smokers trail, there was, you know, like there was a lot like that went on. So again, the liability things that are then put on this district and who is going to police that? Are Dr. Cronin want to walk around and.
No.
Police that, because I'm sure that we don't want to. Add that to your um, current things that you're already dealing with, is it a privilege? Absolutely, and I remember being able to walk and be able to do things, it was awesome to go out. But with the way the world has changed over the last twenty, twenty-five years, that also impacts this, so in discussions we had earlier. So safety, security, what are they going to be bringing back into the school, we already have issues with the vape pens, marijuana and things being utilized. So are we opening up a gate for more of that to be entering into our building, so there's just a lot of things to consider, I think. Of the current issues that we are having, that our administrators are doing a fantastic job of mitigating the tardiness and absences, and this is kind of like.
I came from an area of an open campus and I know what my thirteen, fourteen and sixteen-year-old self did. And it was not come back after lunch. I'm sorry? We uh, ca- um, Mr. Fluger, can you give me a rough number of. Uh, juniors and seniors that would qualify under a three point three G P A?
He's trying to make.
Yeah, your conversation, I was looking to pull the report, I'll do a quick, no.
Okay, yeah, alright, um. Well, that was just my, I just wanted, kind of like a baseline, so we have an understanding of like.
How many kids?
What we're kind of talking about, because I, in my head, I'm thinking there's going to be. Uh, you know, three hundred kids roaming, you know, roaming around and that's maybe what's in my head isn't the actual reality of the situation, so.
You know, I came from an open campus in Marquette and it was freshman through twelve, I never had an issue once getting back. To school on time, um. Our bit, local businesses right in that little area, it was uh, three of them. Uh, they just, they they did great, it was Lake Superior Pizza, the. It's now Sitco and then the E and J, it was called, um, the three places did amazing.
And I do agree with you, Brad, like I would love to be able to see like, Nick donates to everything in the community, he's a huge supporter of every program. My kids would love to be able to walk across and get. My kids would love to be able to walk across and get something. Yeah, but I'm wondering if we can utilize our snack bar, which, like you said, that they are near paying out of pocket for that. It's now part of the free program, where we could utilize some of the things, where we could have hobbies coming in with pizza, or Rodney's, or maybe there's something Jesse could come up with in the lodge, just like a lunch bucket or something like that, that we could support them for all the support that they do give us, but still maintaining that safety within our four walls.
I think that is a good compromise. I don't know. I agree, but I, I also feel that, you know, if I had to be stuck at school for eight and a half hours and not being able to go outside at all, I don't like that idea. It's not right. They should be able to go outside and get some air.
I mean, you could definitely go outside.
Outside and leaving campus are two different things.
Yeah. I mean, and I, I understand where you're coming from, because I support all of, all of our local businesses as well, like, from all of them. Most of them are my friends, my, of course, supporting them is, is high up there. You're talking kids just running their mouths, looking at each other, crossing a highway, smock. Even though it could be a certain amount of kids, maybe there's only twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty sitting on their cell phones, John said. How many people have you watched walk into a fountain on those gag reels when they're not even looking up from their cell phone? So that liability aspect of it seems like it could definitely be a problem. I mean, and so should the kids be able to go outside? Are they not allowed to go outside at all during the day? Do they not leave?
Well, the middle school does.
Hang outside or?
Fully staffed, our middle school, as we said, every day, unless the weather permits, in the gym when it doesn't. High school, when the weather permits, we, we open up outside when we're fully staffed. Which unfortunately sure hasn't been all the time, so when the administrator can call and assist, we'd be full staff, which is still a bit. High school, not every day.
We'll need to work with Leah to see what would be allowable to let food come in, because she has nutrition to be part of the school lunch program. You're gonna have to hit certain, you know, this many carbs, this many, like, there's this whole profile in order for it to be sold and allowable in our school, and that's during the whole school days. Notice we don't, we don't have pot machines. This is that, it's a long time ago that changed. We used to have pot machines in the district. I mean, we had to take those out, because students couldn't even have access to them and to that, you know, that profile of food, so.
So I have a question too, like, outside of all those pieces, from a financial standpoint of the school, does it increase our insurance rate? Would that be an additional liability on there?
No, it didn't increase the rate. According to Ray, it increased the liability for a potential lawsuit, is what he was basically. And the more parameters you put on it, the less risk the district is inheriting.
So I think that would be a good question, as I said, then, that you were asking, because we asked legal on that.
Right, we did ask that.
But we did not ask for the actual, you know, property insurance and.
That would be, you know, another piece of the puzzle too, if that's gonna increase our cost on the district.
It just sounds like you can just put as many inflammation, implications on it as you want, and then eventually, what, five people get to leave? That's kinda what it sounds like. We do grade point average. We do, and they'll be like, fine tune everything, keep that liability real far down. It just, it doesn't seem like.
Big thing was the cars, because he asked about that. Soon as they're driving behind the eight thousand dollar machine, now we're inheriting that, but if you're not.
How do we police that though? When they leave the building with their car keys, they hop in their car and they're gone, so they get what? And it's like, it's just such a good discussion, but needs to be like a major discussion, where it's like, fine print, fine tune, like, what happens if this kid does leave campus in a vehicle? What if, what if this child gets in somebody else's vehicle that isn't even a part of this campus or the school? And they take off, and what happens to them? Like, there's so many what-ifs that you could possibly think of. And I'm not saying shoot it down. I'm just saying, like, it needs to be a bigger discussion than part E of part A.
That, I understand. And I, that's the other reason I wanted this on there for this month, is to start that discussion, to see what everybody's thoughts were, and, you know. If everybody says no, okay, fine, no.
I mean, we need to contact legal, we need to contact all of that before we could even have an active discussion.
Right, yeah. We gotta find out if we have staff to do it even, you know, or figure out exactly all the, what the rules would be. And I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, see if you guys wanted to discuss it further, or does it die right here?
I think maybe, like, do, like, I don't either, and I think maybe take it in steps. Like, if our kids are not getting any fresh airtime or seeing sunlight, that should be our first priority, like, making sure that it'll be. Even if it's on campus, we have a few picnic tables outside where they can go sit. That's important to me, and I always am stressing that to my staff, like, take your fifteen minutes gold side, get some fresh air, see the sun, it's, you know, you need that. Run sideways too much. Maybe like, we take it in steps and make that piece, and then what that looks like.
The steps are you have to be fully staffed, according to Mr. Flugler, and that hasn't happened since the beginning of the school year. We're already down one supervisor at lunch, and if he's not available, or Rob's not available to step in for being fully staffed, yes, you're right, the kids are not outside.
And that's probably not gonna be this year, you know, but I don't know, I don't know how you break that down to meet some kind of common ground of being able to get some options for some of these kids, get them the fresh air, get those things, and still maintaining all the things we're stressing, the whole of safety and security within the four walls.
And then all the kids with the highest grades get fresh air?
Right. But I think this way it would be the compromise to, you know, those kids too, that Rob's having behavioral issues, they need that.
They do, they do.
Right, but it gives, it, it also gives them something to work towards, you know. A, a good reason to work towards getting excellent grades is to get outside at lunch and it's a fresh air for me, anyway. That would be for me.
I can tell you, I have a great GPA. I was not a great kid all the time either. I made, I had a great GPA, did fantastic, I was National Honor Society, all of it, I was in my class. I made some really poor decisions. I'm nineteen years. Just by GPA doesn't distinguish that.
No, I'm not saying it does.
Yeah, I think there's probably a, a, a lot of things to consider, right? But I mean, at least we're having the initial discussion.
I'm not either. It's just there's so many what-ifs at this point, and so much little information to, like, have answers to the questions that I think it should be tabled and brought up maybe again in December, if we have time to add it to another discussion.
Can we get the fiscal answer first, and then?
Yes, as I said, like, if the premium goes up, yeah.
This would fall into a policy committee discussion.
And I think also, again, just having Leah weigh in on what could be brought in from the outside, what's allowable within the national school lunch program, you know, would help that decision move forward to what could be a compromise.
The policy committee can put this together, have a discussion, bring a recommendation to the board. There you go. Who's the policy committee?
Policy committee was Ashley, Avis, Sarah, and alternate.
And you might, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, and it might not be important, but we are one hundred percent. All lunch and breakfasts are provided for free to all of our students, so currently, right now, students don't have to pay at all. Under the CEP program, that was a federal program, and we were at a, like, a ninety-six percent reimbursement rate. So that meant about four percent was not being reimbursed, but all students were getting the lunch. Now, this year, with the new budget, there's been another layer of funding that has come in to make sure that that four percent is now getting paid. So not the students, you know, ever had to pay, so that's for their first meal. So if they want that second meal or the à la carte, they were bringing money, money in. So that might be a change for them too, of having a free meal at lunch, you know, versus needing to go out and pay for a meal. Choice, obviously a choice, but everybody gets to eat for free here.
So you want a policy committee meeting organized? I'll talk to Avis, and she's the chairperson of that.
Do we wanna go to that first, or do we wanna see if it's feasible with the insurances and stuff?
Figure it out, that before you have a policy committee meeting and just bring a recommendation to the board. That's where that, that's where we have to sort it.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Get the information presented at the policy committee meeting. The policy committee comes to the board and presents it.
Okay, I got you. I'll go here and see.
Okay, got it.
Thirty-one AA grant.
Oh, that's PJ.
Thirty-one double A is a, well, it's, it's the safety, security, and mental health. Very, very broad as to what it can be used as. It was actually a merger of a couple different grants, and they all merged into thirty-one double A. What we have right now, that's required for this grant, is that we have to get public comment before we can spend the money. The money is brought by a per pupil basis, so it's a fixed amount per pupil. The amount changes as the years go by. Right now, we've done a survey online. It's posted on our website. We've also sent it out via email through the One Call system and sent it through ClassDojo to get responses. We are well over a hundred responses already on it, so that we have some sort of positive, or rather, just feedback in general. Things that we put on it, on the survey, were things that the staff looked at, and also, last year, we did a critical site assessment that was, we got a grant for to assess the facilities, the policies, procedures throughout the district for their, their safety and security. Items that were on the survey were exterior lighting upgrades, security cameras improvement, and associated with that is vape detectors, door intercoms, and bus cameras. Improved exterior door systems, improved interior door systems. Additional counselors and social workers to help us keep the personnel, which the principals just said have been invaluable to making progress. And then, a company called SEC, Secure Education Consultants. They are a firm that specializes in safety and security of schools. That's all that they do, period. They, they have a program that helps us to improve our programs, basically, is what it is.
To improve what? I'm sorry.
Our program.
Our programs, our internal, our policies, our procedures, looking at the assess, assessments of what part of our physical security measures can we do now to help us? Also, one last bonus is, some of this money is going to work on things that otherwise we'd have to spend sinking fund money on. So it helps offset some of those costs, because lighting for physical security is something we still need to fix, and otherwise, it would be sinking fund worry. Just, that's just one example. Any other questions?
So timeline on this is that we have to put the grant together and apply for this. The funding is guaranteed, but they have to approve how you're going to be using your funding. So with this being a public meeting and, you know, ability to have public comment on this subject, where we could get feedback in addition to the survey, we've satisfied that requirement, and we have to put a budget together for these, for these items. And so we'll be, you know, finalizing, Ian, myself, and PJ had worked, you know, two days, four hours apiece, like, getting all of these quotes and getting a budget together. So we're pretty much ready to go, as long as everything, you know, falls in line with the way we think it's going to. We felt it was worth the time to do that. So I would suspect in December or January, we would come back to you then to approve purchasing. These are going to be over the competitive bid threshold, and so that requires your approval of the purchase of these, of this equipment. But it's going to be through like the RMC bid or some other consortiums, so we will not, the competitive bidding requirement will be satisfied that way. So be on the lookout for that. This is also kind of a heads up for you guys, that when you see, for instance, maybe it's gonna be vape or detectors or new camera systems, like, this is the funding source for this. And I think December tenth is the deadline for that, great, but I wanna get it done sooner than that, and we're, we're ready to, we'll, you know, be able to finalize everything that we've been working on that. So that's just kind of a heads up, because this grant for us, we have some funding from last year, as well as this year. Three hundred and, what did I tell you? Three hundred plus thousand dollars is what we're gonna be, what, what we're going to be spending on this grant. And I think we're gonna apply for about two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil.
Correct.
We know we're guaranteed two hundred and twenty dollars per pupil.
But then, one of my meetings at the region of one, it said, apply for more, because that if any district doesn't, we're gonna have more money then to give, and those that are ready will get funded.
Yep, and we'll be ready.
If you haven't asked for it, you cannot get it.
Yes, yes.
So we just want, you know, we wanted your feedback as well on this, of these items that were identified in the security report. You know, if you had any feedback on that, of course, we wanted to hear that from you, because this grant will be sent into the state here in the next year or so. But I'll ask.
Yeah, so is this, um, I don't know if Ian's still here, is this like the, that super awesome, like, camera system you have? I have got to comment on that. I geeked out about it with Brad and TJ. I have been graduated for twenty years. I looked a lot different as a senior in high school. And he told me just to like stare at this camera. Camera picked it up, he brought me into his room, and it pulled my graduation photo. In twenty years, so I'm talking, I've got a beard, I've got gray hair, I've got wrinkles, and I was like babyface Christopher twenty, twenty years ago, and I was just like, I was shocked. And then I was sitting there, and there's another camera, and it's still picking me up and pulling, it was just, it was crazy. Yeah, it's, it's unbelievable how amazing that, that sort of technology could be.
I was excited because the staffing time that it takes PJ or Rob to be able to look through in order to prove that whatever happened, the incident happened, happened. So the consequence, boom, done.
Even as, um, voice?
It will have voice as well, yes. So if you don't see pictures, like, if something's going on in the bathroom, because that's where the vape detectors will be, it will pick up voices and tell you who they think it is. But the vape, they've been testing out the vape detectors on that, and that's, it's pretty sensitive. It's pretty sensitive. So this is gonna be a great tool, right? We don't wanna ever say this is never gonna replace administration. This isn't, you know. They still need, they will still be doing their due diligence and doing the investigations, and, you know, there's more to the story sometimes than just what the system tells you. It's, but it's going to be a fantastic tool that's gonna allow the administration up here to just work so much faster. And hopefully too, when students hear that these systems are in place, they change their behavior themselves versus getting caught and being forced to change behavior, or looking to try to get more crafty to hide behavior. Hopefully, they just say, alright, I'll just do what I need to do after school, not during school, so.
Well, the most important piece is that it's allowed to pay for things that a sinking fund would normally pay for, which we voted to not renew. So now we have to find a way to fix that.
That's right.
So, perfect.
What department updates do we have?
Oh, PJ, you had some department updates?
Okay, department updates with transportation. We've been campaigning fairly hard for bus drivers. I did finally have one make it through the training program today, so they are a legal bus driver. They still have more training that they need to do in order to be a full car-carrying member, but they're allowed to drive a bus. I have three more that are about to start training. They're at various stages of it, and another one that's, that's thinking about getting back in the game. So that's good news.
You were saying by the end of January, you would have four more?
I'm thinking by the end of January, we'll be sitting at about four more, yes. With that, we have, what was already discussed once before, was the bus driver referral form. It's a referral program that they have to meet certain benchmarks, and the person that referred them will then get a cash incentive to help try and drum up more drivers, because even still, with four, that means I might have ones up. Cause I'm, I'm driving the next, the rest of this week to keep things going. Also, Lee and I have been working on an evaluation form for employees, because predominantly the Teamsters haven't had an evaluation form ever. So we're, we have one of those now. We'll start implementing that here in the next couple of months. In the way of buildings, one of the new pieces of software that we're gonna get is called FMX. It's a facility management software that's gonna help us as administrators and the entire team synchronize our efforts and just make better use of our time. It manages facilities through a central calendar, which also allows community members to be able to see events that are listed to know where all the sports team, all the sports practices are, where all the, all the games are at. And it makes sure that the resources and personnel that need to know are all notified all at the same time. So it's, it's, it's really a, a massive synchronization program is what it's for. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Policy committee, who is going to represent?
Would have been Amy's.
Oh, we want to, is that something we can table for the next?
Are you comfortable?
Yeah, I'm excited, it was very basic, um, updates to the policies, um, I don't have a majority.
That's not done.
Multiple things called technical, meaning, uh, just a word or two change, nothing substantive.
Yeah, there was nothing, thank you, I can speak to my. So it's very basic things, um, like capital T, uh, or there was nothing major. The only one that was new was the administrative staff reductions and recalls, which was very basic, it's very short. Um, all of them from our standpoint were. Okay, they're going through that. Unless anybody has any major questions, but like I said, there was no major changes to any of them, it's very small changes, like paintball had a space in it, so it's one word now. Like it just, it was very minute things like that on all of them, there was nothing drastically changed.
In a prior life, you took one of the Neola policies, it talked about technical changes and none of that would have to come to the board. It would not be wasting your time on a capital T for us.
I thought that that was, was that ever replaced?
What, that you already have?
No, yeah, that, the technical changes.
Never had that, but I'm saying.
No, we've had, yes, we've always had technical changes. They basically were, if there was a change in a law.
Oh, I see, I see.
That, yeah, that.
Minor change, it's something that needs to be done, um, cross referencing by, you know, a bi law, um, talking about the Michigan bi laws and there's changes to those, then they need to make the changes to the policy. So that's what it was all in reference to, there was nothing really controversial at all.
If ever you want a policy though that talks about that the superintendent and administrative assistant are allowed to make changes on technical type of things, then it doesn't need to come to board. We can certainly entertain that policy, but if you want to keep that coming forward for grammar and such, we'll keep it the way you do it. But I'm just saying, it does, it is a time saver.
We did talk at the policy committee level of being okay with Dr. Croney for things like this one policy that is in our packet. The only change in it, like we were laughing about it, the only change in it was a capital letter. And it was brought to the committee, I mean, that was one that we felt that.
Kind of silly.
So.
They have the virtual university.
The capital.
Data, um, data information.
Yeah, that was all, but it was, so if the group is okay with it, we would be fine with Dr. Croney making those minor.
But there actually is a policy that gives me that permission, but you need to approve that policy.
Is that one of the policies that, uh, in our first meeting for tonight?
No.
No?
No. We can bring that to our next committee and then we can bring that policy up.
Right. But the policies that you've discussed in the policy committee are now on the new business action that.
Yes, of course, yes.
A little bit?
Yep.
Beautiful.
Perfect.
So we can move on.
Yep, the only thing under superintendent's report is your student count, uh, your total is, um, nine seventy-nine point oh six. That was what we were allowed to, um, get paid for. The number of head count is nine eight nine, so actual noses, bottoms and seats is the nine eight nine.
How does that compare to last year if we don't have that?
I don't have that, but we could get it for you.
It is definitely up over February. I just looked at this last week when I was with Doc, with Dr. Knodovic, um, and I don't remember October's, but I know that September's, I want to say it was like nine seventy-two. Was, excuse me, February of twenty twenty-three, I think was nine seventy-two, so we were up over February. And we had budgeted in like the nine hundred and sixty-three range. Now mind you, this is a three-year averaging, so you don't want to take the difference and multiply by, you know, foundational allowance and go, oh, look, you know, all that extra money. It is more money, it's, it's a fantastic, you know, increase, um, the math just works out a little bit differently than that, so I want to say.
So are declining, so the argument of a declining enrollment from the community is not quite a hundred percent accurate because we are up?
Well, it's a three-year average, you'd have to look.
Um, I think I'm going to say it depends because a year ago, sorry, sorry about that.
I need to learn how to ask the question better.
I know, no, no, well, it's because it just, it just seems to change every year, it really does and you just don't know what's going to happen now. I think the further we get away from COVID, we're starting to see numbers come back, so I would, I'm hopeful that the declining enrollment has bottomed out and we're going to, you know, stay, stay where we are. I mean, of course, we love to grow, but even just staying where we are is just so much better than declining.
Stopping the leak is important.
Stopping the leak is the, is the first thing, right? And so, um, so let's do that and I think getting away from COVID is definitely helping at the, the upper level too because you don't have those online schools. So many people were going to, those kids are going to go back.
Perfect.
Yep, so hopefully the trend is back up.
Thank you.
The district news and board update all really were taken into account with the board goals. Um, correspondence, I didn't see any, did you?
It wasn't really correspondence, it's whatever.
Right, Jack's letter was so well written, I consider it correspondence and it went in the newspaper and we thank him.
Oh, Mr. Cedar, okay, I didn't watch the Jaffe you were talking about.
He's my only Jack.
Well, there's another one.
Okay, oh, there, there is another.
This is Mr. Cedar.
All right, that's, makes me feel, all right.
Okay.
I did see that.
All right, we're on to new business.
Yes, so the December board meeting change, are we looking to change it to the eighteenth because I always thought it was the eighteenth?
It normally would be, but I was told that you moved it off of Christmas week, that last week to make it easier for families and staff and I get that. But, sorry, we need it to be the eighteenth because, uh, the conversation with, well.
It could, it's very confusing, it, it really, this started because of the bond issue and the path that we thought we were on with going in May and going back to treasury was going to require.
A later date.
A later date.
But now, we may need to go in February because there's lots of good if we would go in February. So can we move it just to have that still as an option?
I think it's the safest thing to do.
Yeah, okay, so that's what we need you to do, please.
So for December eighteenth?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion in a second.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to change the December meeting to the eighteenth. One second. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any discussion, sorry? Any opposed, okay, December eighteenth.
Thank you, Jeff.
Bingo.
Okay.
Um, so we have a res- is, no, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, I'm pretty sure that as a board, we've had a chance to review the November eighth election results. Um, so I just, I guess need a motion to accept the election results.
I'll make a motion to accept the November eighth, two thousand twenty-three election results.
One second. Discussion, hall of favor? Aye, any opposed? Uh, resolution, advance one school, one community initiative and construction prequalifying application to the Michigan Department of Treasury. So we need to make a.
Motion for that because if this does become your choice for an option, I would have to have this resolution in order to move that forward for the treasury date, is it the twelfth, Amy?
Yes.
That twelfth is the appointment that Dave Moore, or was it Steve?
It's the treasury, it's the treasury date.
But they, one of the two of them got that date for us, I thought it was Dave.
And this is the same thing that we jumped through the hoops to get to in June?
Yeah.
To basically say that yes, to give the state's blessing, saying yes, we can, no, we can't, this is the scope of how much we can do and what we can't do, right?
Correct.
Is that a good paraphrase?
Yes.
Basically, it's the checks and balances that show that we're not trying to build some elaborate school that our decline, our enrollment and budget allows.
Correct.
That the enrollment, uh, we're not building.
Not overbuilding.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm saying that out loud because there seems, I've seen confusion in the public that we're building this despite those factors being considered when in fact, we are considering those factors, that's why we go to them, all right.
So if this does end up being the avenue that we're going in May, this resolution would be necessary. If the determination is no, we're going in February, then this resolution wouldn't be necessary. But without this, we can't proceed with the December twelfth treasury meeting.
Um, or a third option would be that you could do this, um, resolution with an, with an amendment. It would be after the first, um, sentence where it authorizes the superintendent to construct the prequalifying application to the Michigan Department of Treasury. Um, you, you could add, um, like if necessary.
If or if determined.
Or if determined to be necessary or something along those lines because we do have a meeting with the community group tomorrow to discuss, you know, that email that Dr. Croney forwarded to you that we kind of listed out all of the pros and cons of each method. And so just for the public who's hearing this, we have really two ways to go here, to go back to the, to the people. We could either go with a qualified, um, bond or a non-qualified bond. Qualified bond is what we went to the voters with in November, which was this process through treasury. Um, the benefit of that is that we then get to use the state's rating. Um, we also, it's backed by treasury, um, it's, you know, those mills then are then qualified. So if you ever needed to get to the school bond revolving loan program, you could do that. I listed all of those out in my, you know, in my email to you, which I'm sure you all just loved reading all of it, all of that detail.
No, it's important that it's put out here because we have this knowledge, but for us to speak to it in the depth that you can, it gets lost.
Yep, so, but on the flip side is it, we, we would go in May. Well, with May, we would at this point be the only, on the, thing on the, um, election, which would mean it would be more cost again. So we know that that's not, um.
Popular.
Popular, thank you, it is not, it is not popular. Um, the cost again, it was ten thousand four hundred dollars for our last election in twenty nineteen. And talking with Linda Talzma and the whole conversation, she, you know, she's the county clerk, so she understands that we get five bills from, four bills, one from each township, plus the county, so she knows that. And she, she agrees that the, the cost should be around that same amount, there might be some inflation with that, but it's not going to be the extraordinary amount that has been, um, said it's going to be. So, but that is about another, maybe it's eleven thousand, maybe it's twelve thousand, you know, I don't know, but that would be that cost in May, which I think is, uh, if you're, you would put that in a con, it may be in the con, you know, category. Um, going in February, the only way we can go in February is with the non-qualified. It is absolutely impossible to go qualified in February, they're just.
Not enough time.
Not enough, and it's not that, oh, if you work harder or pull some strings, it's just, it is, it just won't work. So we could go non-qualified, um, take treasury, you know, out of the conversation, you know, that's fine, we can do that. Um, we would then want to buy some bond insurance, once the bond passed, we would buy bond insurance to ensure that, since we didn't have the treasury backing. Um, we do know that there would be a cost of about two hundred thousand dollars is what's estimated, so that would be part of the bond and it's be an allowable bond cost that would come out of the project. It probably would not increase the actual mills on the people and I know two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to me and it's probably a lot of money to you and to our individual taxpayers. But to a forty-five to fifty million dollar project, two hundred thousand dollars is not enough to sway the mills or to make the mills go up. So it's just something that would be absorbed, um, like in our general conditions and our contingencies already. Are those?
Yeah, there's more because the interest, uh, in the inflation is not going to be as much and so that takes care of the two hundred thousand. Plus, we're in the building a whole year earlier.
Yep.
Because are in the same, construction is same for the construction schedule. So that's two biggies.
Yep.
For not paying the increase on the inflation and the interest rates, et cetera.
Right.
It needs to be thought through.
Could we bring this, when do you need this by the other before, like could we bring this to the meeting on the fourth, after you leave the scope?
We will know the scope because of tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a really big meeting.
Big.
A really, really big meeting.
So could we bring this plan, like what this plan is going to be to our special meeting on the, is it December?
You mean the resolution?
Yeah, so and once you have an idea of what that meeting tomorrow entails and what this looks like moving forward.
I guess the question is, do you need the resolution tonight, can it be tabled until the special meeting on the fourth?
Um.
Cause the resolution basically says, can we do this?
Yeah, but there's a timeline, I thought that it needed this.
I think what's really great about this is that you as a board is saying, we are not retreating on this, we are moving forward and we're giving the superintendent marching orders to move forward. What that exactly looks like is to be determined, which is why if we added this, you know, if necessary.
But it means you're behind us.
Yeah, just keep working on it.
That's all it means. And I like the if it's necessary because the if it's necessary means we haven't decided if it's going to be February or if it's going to be May.
Where does if necessary need to be put in?
Um, the end of the first sentence after it talking about the prequalifying application to treasury.
I can make the motion?
Uh, and I just, before the, before the motion, just know that, like we said, really big meeting tomorrow and then you'll be getting as a board, an update from Dr. Croney as to the outcome of that meeting, scope, you know, what's, what's happening on that because this, this is, this is very, very really fast turnaround time. And so I don't think we really want to wait until, that's why I'm wanting this tonight, is to wait until December because what if it, um, tomorrow, the community group says, oh, no, I think it should be going in May. Well, now we have to keep going on this, for this treasury meeting on the twelfth. But preparing that whole application is huge, I mean, there's just so much work to be done in that, that getting the support of this resolution, I think is just an important show to the public of your intentions to keep moving forward, if I think that that's your intentions.
Even, even though that application has already been done, they still have to go back to it and recalculate every single number that's in there based on everything and go back in and look at bids and look at all of that stuff. So it's, it's a hard concept to say, oh, we just did that, they can just change the date, that's not what they have to do.
No.
That project, because project managers have to go back in and re totally do that application.
So I can air a resolution and we can modify it if I'm not hitting all the key points, is that fair? So I make a motion that we adopt a resolution to advance the one school.
Wait, I have a question, why, no, I'm, I'm sorry, but listen.
Well, I'm right in the middle of a motion, Jesse.
And you're not even supposed to be talking.
We're not having a discussion right now, just hold on.
Go.
So I make a motion for a resolution to advance the one school, one community initiative and construction, prequalifying application to the Michigan Department of Treasury, if necessary.
I'll sign it.
Okay.
Do you want to keep going?
Do we have a discussion on that?
I think you've already discussed it before you made the motion.
Right, all in favor?
Right.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
I think it's the second sentence in there is, it's good to note that the summary scope of work includes what the previous plan scope was, such as the safety, building additions, renovations and classroom improvements, plus any new projects that are identified, um, with input from the staff, community and the community committee.
Right.
Because there, you know, like the block house issue and an increased, we now have a good cost for the bus garage roofs, you know, that we're talking about.
And the restrooms, because you don't have a block housing.
So adding restrooms and concession onto the auxiliary gym for field events, you know, so we're even fine tuning a little bit more. So the scope could, it could look slightly different, um.
But it's that committee that's got a huge task tomorrow.
So this is what the thing about the citizens advisory, or about the committee, is that I want to take my lead from their work that they are doing, right? And I think that the board should be following their lead. This isn't, this isn't a formal board, uh, citizens advisory committee and that's what, we need to have that in place. If we're going to be listening, we need to appoint who we're listening to, right? And identify to the community, those community partners that we're identifying.
I think of this more as, uh, as an advisory, they, they are like, uh, kind of like our. I think of this more as an advisory, they, they are like, kind of like our eyes and ears, but they just, they report back to the superintendent and then the superintendent's going to bring you a recommendation.
But I'm expanding the committee even bigger. So if you're appointing just those, the names are going to get much larger because I've asked the teachers to give two influential parents per classroom. We need to go bigger. We have 400 votes that have to switch. So it means 200 people need to switch from a no to a yes. We can't put the burden on five people. It needs to go bigger. And then we need to also identify other influencers in the community besides parents.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, but we, if, if, if you, if people are, if you're identifying or you're asking.
Asking teachers.
Asking teachers to identify parents or community members or whatever, and then they're coming to you and you're coming to us. Like who, who, who are we?
I could give you a list of the names of what's all the.
I think that the list should be out there for everybody, you know? Like, I, I think that this should be, if it's a real citizens advisory committee where we're listening to the community, then we should know what members of the community we're listening to.
I'm completely fine with getting you a list.
And I guess that was my worry is that from day one that we were only supposed to be a grassroots committee because we were not supposed to be part of the school board or appointed board of board.
Correct.
So as you list this one school, one community initiative, that's your, you're talking about us when you're not supposed to. And I think that was my point of that, is now you're putting us into that bond verbiage.
I lost you. You're not, I'm not supposed to talk to you.
No, 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 you're not, you're not supposed to, like, we are not, we're just a grassroots community group. We have nothing to do with the school.
Right.
So that's why I'm confused and that's why I'm asking that is because.
Oh, because we adopted the one school, one initiate, one community type verbiage of your group, right? Is that what you're asking?
And I guess that maybe that's where I'm confused and I'm worried that others in the outside world would understand it that way too. That, that we have been told very specifically, the only reason we're allowed to say yes is because we are a grassroots.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I'm not allowed to say yes.
Correct.
You're allowed.
But as soon as you put that group into that verbiage, if that's how people understand it, we're breaking that rule.
So this isn't breaking the rule at all because we aren't as a board putting you guys or asking you to be an actual committee? So I get where like the, the verbiage seems a little off, but in no way, shape or form is, is adopting that resolution going to like hurt or take away from all of the work that you guys are doing. And they're two separate things.
I don't think it, I don't, and I don't mean for it to take away, but I don't want it to be construed wrong. You guys, we have worked really hard on this whole transparency thing and I just don't want it to stumble us.
I think too, the one school, one community, that was on the flyer that went out. And so that was just a way to keep using that same tagline, if you will, of what that project was versus that that's your committee name, is how I would also see the difference between the two and point that out if anybody was questioning it. It's like we've kind of, one school, one community, like that's what we're, that's what our goal is here with, with this project. Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I think we do want to make it very clear. They are a grassroots committee. They, they are in charge of themselves. They ask us questions and then, like that Facebook page, that's all them. It is not us. Jessie will ask me questions and then she takes it from there. She uses my words. That's her business. If she wants to change it up, you know, and put, that's her business too. It, it is, it really is very separate in walking that out day to day. Very, two very separate entities that they, that they do their own work. They are in charge of themselves. They really do not, they do not answer to the superintendent or to, when we're in these meetings, they don't answer to us. They are a volunteer grassroots group that just, thank God, is here. You know, thank God is here. So.
Agreed. Make the note, sorry. Play referral program?
Yes, need approval on that. That was what PJ was talking about with the form. Bus drivers who complete the testing, all of the CDL requirements. The person who referred that bus driver to try and become a bus driver now is going to get 500 upon the person's completion. Then the person would need to work for us for a certain number of days, trips, and then the final 500 gets paid out to the person doing the referring. I've seen this work, people referring their family members to become a bus driver. It's like, great, be successful, put a thousand bucks in your pocket.
And we'd like this to be employee referral, not just, we just have an example of the bus driver referral form.
Because that's the hardest.
Because that was the hardest one to really, the training that is necessary to get in. But right now, we would also like to roll that out for paraprofessionals. And if we just had the approval on an employee referral program, then whatever spot is really hard to fill at that time, under the superintendent's authorization, could say, okay, we're going to do an employee program for this, referral program for this. And that just gives us flexibility to be able to.
Certainly going to help us up with that one student who's going to need a one-on-one pair. If we can be able to get better supervision, we're also going to get kids out and have fresh air. And it goes on and on, stack.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'm sorry, love?
We can, yeah, make the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll make a motion to approve the employee referral program bonus.
All in favor?
What are we going to discuss?
This is money. You need to do a roll call.
We're going to discuss too.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
How's that looking about?
It, it's fine. This being a thousand dollars, I mean, we spend so much money on turnover. You know what I mean? I'm going to say soft cost, but just the amount of time and extra work that it takes on turnover is just, you know, mind blowing. So a thousand dollars, it would be interesting to see. I don't see this, I don't think we're going to get 100 referrals, you know, where this is going to be a really huge cost. I would love if we could get 10 referrals over the course of this year and have to pay out $10,000. I think it's money very well spent if it helps us stabilize our, our staff.
Do we pay for CDLs for people also?
Yeah, we do.
So we pay for the CBL and give a thousand dollars?
And their training.
Keep in mind now, this is the, the person who refers.
What's that?
The, this money is going to go to the person who refers, but not the new employee.
So if you're telling and I'm not, and you refer me to, and I get hired and I stick out the time, then you get a bonus for your staff.
Yep.
Because you better go.
So the theory is people only want good people working in their organization. And I'm going to only refer you if I think that, you know, you're a good egg.
You're going to stick around and give me a thousand dollars.
Yeah, you got it.
And then one thing like I do, we've done this, and the nice thing about it versus like a sign-on bonus is it gives your current employees that versus that animosity that the new person coming in is getting that sign-on bonus, where your current employees are getting that appreciation, that value.
Good point.
So it kind of gives that a little extra. We're signing bonuses tend to have animosity attached to them.
Any might be more inclined to support.
Oh, support the new person? Yeah.
Because you want to see them be successful, seeing as they're every hundred dollars.
Did you, Sarah, what are you thinking about the amount? Does that seem reasonable to you? Or did you, what do you see in your industry for?
For us, it's more than that. It's actually 250 referral bonus and it's also based on position.
Okay.
So.
So we're being really generous?
Yes.
Good, hopefully it works because, because bus drivers and paraprofessionals is a constant opening.
Yeah. And it's also like our HR department distinguishes if our C-suite, like what positions even fall into that referral bonus program, not all do. And it also like is based on locations as well because we're spread throughout the U.P., so that makes us a little bit different in that sense. But our staff were more receptive to that than when the discussion of sign-on bonuses came up. And then they were like, wait, we're not getting raises, but these are, you know, so it really, that animosity distinguishes and it makes your, your current staff feel a little bit more valued with getting that. So that part of it I do, my question with it being a thousand dollars is how many current ones are we looking to fill? So would it be upwards of 10,000 and are we talking 5,000? What would that number in, if we were able to keep, so say we hired and we're retaining?
So we have, I think, four and a half parapositions open right now, or five, maybe five parapositions opening. So if all of those came with a referral, then that would be $5,000 right now. Bus drivers, three. So if those came with a referral. So that's, that's the other thing is like, doesn't mean that we're going to fill these positions with a, with a staff referral.
And I can say when we opened up our referral program, I think, and don't quote me because I don't get all of them, but I think there was like two positions that actually got filled and got the referral bonus paid.
Yes.
So not even many of them did.
Yeah.
It wasn't super successful even. But.
You've got to try something.
Got to try something.
It's there. It's an option. So just so you know, like, it doesn't necessarily mean.
Don't get your hopes up too much.
I was trying.
We're staying all staff too. So like this, this is staff that's like paid by Gwynn, but even like, I mean, I would do it if our substitutes, you know, I would consider them our staff. Like, if you come to opening day, you know, then, you know, if, if you're on, if, if you're on our email, if you have a Gwynn email, then you're considered a staff. Because, you know, we give those to us, we give them to coaches, we give them to even, I'm trying to think of.
Work members?
Sure. Superior rehab, right? You know, because we consider them our staff, even if they're paid by a third party. So because we have a goal here, right? And this is to not, you know, bus drivers, yes, but especially parapros. That's one of the reasons why they've come to us. They are stretched so thin that, you know.
I'm, I'm in agreement to it. I can't speak for everybody, but I think when we talk about safety, security of our students and having a good learning environment, we have to do something. Safety is an issue everywhere. So we have to do something.
I don't think we should go retroactive. I think we should start from your motion going forward.
Correct. I agree.
So are we good?
Yeah, I think we'll roll call.
This is money.
Yeah. So roll call, vote all in favor.
No.
We don't need to, we don't need to do, we don't roll call.
You don't do roll call for money here in the state?
Okay, that's not a requirement.
It could, but.
Yeah, you can, you can.
You can do it.
I, anybody opposed? Thank you. So Neil, policy, someone has to make this motion because I'm out of gas.
I'll make a motion to.
Accept the first read of.
Accept the first reading of the board policies that we presented.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this further?
Can that work for you, Jay? Jane, Jane.
Does that motion work for you?
Yeah, that motion is beautiful.
Okay. No discussion?
On to the next one.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Personnel resignations. Sherri Coopler, new hour supervisor, Gilbert Elementary School, effective date of resignation, October 27th, 2023. Justin.
Take it all together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't clarify. Justin Mackey, parapro, Gwynn Middle High School, effective date of resignation, November 3rd, 2023. Melinda Peterson, bus driver, Gwynn Bus Garage, effective date of resignation, November 8th, 2023. Holly Young, paraprofessional, KI Sawyer Elementary, effective date of resignation, November 10th, 2023. And Kay Drayton, bus driver, Gwynn Bus Garage, effective date of resignation, November 17th, 2023. The motion to accept.
Kate.
Did I say Kate?
No, you said Kate.
Kate.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations from those individuals.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Do these similarly?
Yes.
Okay.
Employment, Donald Hutchins, JV girls basketball head coach, not head coach, that's not me. Gwynn Middle High School, effective date of hire, first date of the winter 2023 season, need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Donald Hutchins, JV girls basketball.
You said it first.
Fighting for him. We're fighting for him.
Jane, Jane, you'll, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Heather Wilcox, Wilcox, eighth grade cheerleading coach, Gwynn Middle High School, effective date of hire, first day of the winter 2023 sports season. Just for the record, there's no candidate profile because she is already an employee in the office.
I'll make a motion to accept Heather Wilcox.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Any opposed? Emily Formolo.
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 Carrier.
Carrier, counselor, Gilbert Elementary School, effective date of hire, October 26th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept Emily.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kristin Aho, new hour supervisor, Gilbert Elementary School, effective date of hire, October 30th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept Kristin.
Kirsten.
Kirsten, I'm sorry, Kirsten.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, Jana, help me out.
That's correct. Or Leviela.
No, that is on the. Look, what is it?
Leviela.
Leviela, okay. Parapro, Gwynn Middle High School, effective date of hire, October 31st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept the hiring, Jana.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I will make a motion for Mackenzie Hollands, parapro, Gilbert Elementary School, effective date of hire, November 6th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Make a motion to accept William Aho, bus driver, Gwynn Bus Garage, effective date of hire, November 6th, 2023.
Make a motion to hire William Aho.
You're seconding it.
Oh, sorry, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Make a motion to accept Graham Vink, library paraprofessional, Gilbert Elementary School, KI Sawyer Elementary School, effective date of hire, November 10th, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Make a motion to accept Eric Ely Lacoste, parapro, KI Sawyer Elementary School, effective date of hire, November 13th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, you heard. Give some donations, donors choose, play, these are not votes, right?
No.
Okay. Well, there's a, we have to motion to accept.
Yeah, all at once.
In their entirety.
Yeah, okay. So donors choose, play a serious learning project, $298.53 for students at GMS. Kyle Storm Insurance Agency, $75 teachers pay, teacher's e-gift card donated to Linda Wagner's classroom at KI Sawyer Elementary. Walmart, $411.01 for student supplies donated to Gwynn Middle High School. And United Way socks, undergarments, various personal hygiene and school supplies donated to Gilbert Elementary. Need a motion to accept with all kinds of gratitude.
I'll make a motion to accept with all kinds of gratitude.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Done. Is there any public comment?
Hey, my little staff, stay up there.
Hello, my name is Jessie Melkory. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for your support as we, as the one school, one community has gone forward in our great efforts to build a better and bigger school for our students and our staff. I want to touch base on PJ's great comments and stuff about the sinking fund. People need to remember that that was done before COVID and the costs of doing business have drastically grown in the sense that what we thought was going to be able to be covered with those funds before can't even come close to touching them now. The school board, PJ, have done a great amount of work on getting those things done, but it's just not going to cover it. It hasn't covered it. It's not going to. It's awesome to hear about the 31AA grant because that is some great improvements that can also, maybe we can talk tomorrow at that community meeting on ways to work that into a little bit of cost savings. I don't know if that was the first thing I thought. I wanted to touch base and thank the principals immensely for their due diligence on the NWEA and MTSS update. Kudos to you guys. Like, that's amazing, those improvements. Can you share some of those attendance graphs and, and testing graphs with me? I know that you guys are doing an amazing job with the social media on the positivity stuff. So I don't know that some of that should go out there, but I think we have other ways to help promote that attendance and test. to help promote that attendance and testing and how important it is to get our kids here. The off-campus thing, I'm going to touch base on that. I am that restaurant that's out of town and I am all about supporting this and giving these kids an opportunity for a ability to have, um, something positive. You mentioned that, as you said something, make the positives so loud that the negatives aren't heard. Nothing bigger and better than that. Um, we, we, you, you all gave an amazing list of what ifs, what ifs. What if? What if I leave here and I drive out into the road and somebody hits me? What if I'm walking across the street to the pizza place and it's after school? All the what ifs are still there, okay? But let's, you, you guys are doing a great job on making things happen here. I only see this as a, as a positive reinforcement and a way to give back to those kids that are doing good. Um, lastly, when you read that big list of resignations, I wondered, do you give those, do you, Dr. Crony, give those an exit interview to figure out why they're leaving?
We started that, um, last week. So that was something that we need to know for improvement's sake.
Right.
What, what more, if there's anything, or was it a different reason that they left?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Cedar.
My name's Jack.
Hi, Jack.
First of all, Mr. Waldo, when Dr. Crony was hired as permanent superintendent, you said it was the first time you saw me smile. I've been smiling a lot since that day. And I'm all smiles regarding tonight's meeting. It was informative, it was focused, issues are being addressed, progress is being made. I'm absolutely thrilled with tonight's meeting. Now the bond vote. It was very disappointing that the bond was voted down November seventh. Uh, the committee is reviewing all data and input from the community in preparation for another vote. Tonight's meeting has energized me to work even harder to get the next bond passed. I hope the community sees the positive changes that are being made and support the school and students by voting yes for the next bond. Everyone is working together as a team and doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. So, uh, board member comments, and I do have one from this gentleman who zaps it tonight, so I don't know if you want me to start off with that.
Go ahead.
Not here, we can throw hers under the bus. All right. I gotta find it.
While you're searching for that, I owe twenty bucks for my phone going off. I will put it in the kitty.
Each?
Swer jar?
Not each, I will put the twenty bucks in.
Can we just take that out of my swer jar?
I'll take pizza.
So I apologize.
So this is from Ashley. Uh, first, please accept my apologies for not being able to attend the.